So by order number 29-20 issued on March 18th, 2020, NMUSD board meetings will be closed to the public. I have brought interpretation al español a través del mismo enlace de Zoom. I'm calling to order the special board meeting via teleconference at 4:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Trustee Floor.
Here.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Trustee Black. Trustee Barto. Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Snow.
Here.
Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Mr. Lee Sung.
Here.
Okay, I know that they're coming, they knew. Oh, Michelle's come on, so Rosie, you saw that?
Yes, thank you.
And I think, and Trustee Black is on now, too.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, roll call, please. Roll call.
Do you like me to start?
We just did it. Oh, we just did it, I'm sorry, my fault. Adoption of the agenda.
Move adoption of the agenda.
Trustee. Trust, who said, who said second?
Yelsey.
I mean, who said second? Black?
Black.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't know my thing was on.
It was moved by trustee Yelsey and seconded by trustee Black. Roll call.
Trustee Floor.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Black.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Snow.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Terrific. We are now moving on to community input on the special agenda item only. I do want to make a couple of comments. We have received a number of comments, but because the LCAP puts some information in there regarding distance learning, many of these comments do not even mention the LCAP, but we will be reading them all because they are under that and because the LCAP did specifically call out a number of distance learning items as well as in-person, so that's why we will be reading all of the comments. Trustee Black, would you like to read the following statement?
Sure. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on special meeting agenda only. Electronically submitted comments on special agenda items will be read into the video record of the meeting.
Okay, because we have 20, 29 comments, we will limit the items to two minutes each and we will go for a maximum of, is 30, is 30 minutes okay, ladies? Thumbs up, so I can see all of you. Okay, so we will begin. Trustee Anderson.
My comment is from Carrie Anderson. I can definitively say that I do not feel safe or protected by the proposed plan to reopen schools for in-person learning. The district has failed to take into consideration the concerns of staff for our safety, the safety of our families, and the safety of our students. During staff meetings, there is an imbalance of questions to answers. Most often, I walk away feeling like the plan is to fly the plane as we build it. There are so many unanswered questions and clear-cut guidelines of how to open in a safe manner. During this special education meeting, we were told by district administration that if we were not being flexible, we were in the wrong profession. I don't feel human beings should have to be flexible when it comes to safety. This type of language and sentiment further reinforces the lack of concern for our health and safety. This, other OC districts have recognized the need for extensive planning and either did it over the summer, like Irvine Unified, or have postponed reopening their schools until they are able to give greater specificity to their plans, like Placentia, Yorba Linda, and Garden Grove. I think the district needs to take a step back and listen to the concerns of the people being asked to be the most vulnerable. I am requesting the district postpone opening until all safety concerns have been addressed and that we have a united plan that is equal across all school sites.
Thank you. Trustee Barto.
My comment is from Lisa Catch. I am writing to you today to express our disappointment in the new mask policy. To change this now, four days before the start of school, shows how little prepared the district isn't starting in-person instruction. The only reason we have stayed enrolled is because second graders and under were not required to wear a mask. Otherwise, we would have gone a different direction with our son's education, which so far this year has been subpar at best due to lengthy Zoom and screen times. We fully believe...
We lost you. Trustee Barto, can you hear her? Trustee Barto? Trustee Barto, we've lost you.
She can't hear.
She may have to log back in. You may have to log, trustee, I don't, we don't, we didn't hear your last comments. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read.
Text her.
I'm gonna finish her, her portion. We fully believe that wearing a mask for longer than 30 minutes is unhealthy and studies have shown that prolonged mask wearing can cause a number of health issues. Please revert back to what the district promised months ago, no masks for children, second grade and below. Thank you for your time. Trustee Black, you have the next one.
Elizabeth Ramos. I'm a teacher at Davis Magnet School and the parent of a first grader at Woodland. I am writing to you at 5:30 AM before I, I take him for his first day of learning on campus. Once he is inside Woodland's gate, I head to my classroom to Zoom with my students and continue to prepare for my reopening on Thursday. When I join your Zoom this evening, I expect to see you all sitting in the boardroom, spaced six feet apart, wearing your mask and sitting behind plastic shields. The same things that you have decided are safe for my son and, and I, beginning this week. If you are continuing to hold your meetings over Zoom rather than in-person, I hope you can see the hypocrisy of your actions. No one knows if the safety measures you have approved be put in place at Newport Mesa schools will keep the hundreds of teachers and staff as well as thousands of students safe. If you don't believe in the safety procedures enough to adopt them for your board meeting, then you certainly don't believe they will be enough for us. You each represent three to six Newport Mesa schools. I hope that over the next two weeks, you each spend a significant amount of time at your school site, participate in the visual wellness screening, supervise students washing their hands and taking bathroom break, sit in desks for the two and a half hour learning blocks to see how it feels to go to school under these conditions. Seeing photos and hearing stories about board members, Superintendent Lee Sung, and other district administrators on our school sites in the coming weeks will help me feel more secure in the safety of our campus. The lack of your presence will send a clear message that you do not believe these sites are a safe place to spend time.
Thank you. I have the next one. It's Tamara Fairbanks, president of the NM, Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. Dear trustees, I would like to thank the student services department for trying their best to make the engagement logs less painful. Although the state requirements for the logs are quite cumbersome, I do believe that NMUSD is taking a reasonable approach to utilizing them. I wish our school board to, to join with others to push back on the state or the unreasonable state expectations that take away from student learning. We need more engagement in instruction and less in engagement logs. I do wish that we had more engagement in the structure of our hybrid models. Our full-day model would have provided more instructional minutes and more continuity at the elementary level. It would have also provided a better chance for those who were in need of childcare. Although the children are going to school every day, the two hours of instruction does not provide enough time for quality connection and curriculum. One of the biggest concerns I have with this plan is the limited bus service. Although NMUSD is providing busing for special, special education, they eliminated busing for our schools who are located in the most dangerous high-traffic areas. I wish for the surplus in our school district's budget to be invested in, into the students in the west side of Costa Mesa who have crossed streets like 19th Street. The learning continuity plan is a good start for, to a planning document. Although I wish the consistency of this plan occurred during a school beginning, I hope, my hope is that the school district, the districts actually follows through on the promises that are recorded in this document. I believe that when we explain our expectations to our employees as clearly as we explain them to our parents, we will have a stronger community. Thank you. Trustee Metoyer.
We need safe schools for all, is the group, or the person who wrote this one. Current plan poses many safety issues while reducing instructional time with students. The plan is rushed creating a false deadline rather than beginning the process involving all the stakeholders and providing opportunity for all the issues to be addressed in a collaborative way. The current plan has been top-down with no time to address the many concerns. It has increased the workload and stress of teachers juggling maintaining current instruction online while preparing to return. Giving us time by suddenly canceling half-day, then full-day haphazardly left teachers abandoning lessons already planned for and special education classes canceled resulting in not reducing our workload in a real sense. A more thoughtful plan would have considered the needs of students, teachers, and parents and allowed time for public review and input prior to making a public announcement on start date. Postponing reopening and collaborating with staff and parents poses no downside if the goal of the school board is to represent, to representing all of the district in its decision-making. Collaborative planning and implementation is valuable. As we work together, the heads of many can resolve the concerns and avoid hasty life-threatening mistakes such as air ventilation issues. If the board believes it is safe for in-person school, why are the board meetings virtual? Respectfully consider how school in-person will look so different and the experience will be emotionally difficult for the kids to adhere to the social distancing and teachers maintaining social distance are not making the same connection with kids. The instructional time with teacher is reduced for in-person learning and students with parent help will be responsible for more asynchronous material. Parents will have to juggle adjusting childcare pickup and drop-offs. And on top of it all, we put our whole community at risk for COVID-19. After all...
That is the end of the two minutes?
Thank you.
My comment is from Nikki Presby. I'm the parent of a middle school student, eighth, and two high school students, ninth and 10th. I kindly requested the below questions, concerns, or directly addressed. Please do not send us the very vague school reopening plan, as I have read that many times and the answers cannot be found here. Neighboring districts have implemented options that students learning in-person on campus, learning virtually from home via live streaming or via blended program, combining hybrid in-person classes and virtual learning from home. Why is NMUSD not implementing the virtual option for students on the day their cohort is learning from home? It has been stated some teachers are not comfortable with this model, but if it was a directive from the district and training support was provided, teachers would be equipped to serve all of their students every instructional day. No asynchronous work would need to be created or assigned. Students would continue learning without gaps in instruction and teachers would have more interaction with students. Currently, the middle and high school schedules have cohorts A attending Monday, Thursday, cohort B attending Tuesday, Friday, with Wednesday being a distance learning day. Whether a traditional day with all periods or an alternating A-B day is unclear. Deep cleaning of the campus will occur on Wednesday and over the weekend. Following that schedule, Monday, Thursday will have a highly sanitized environment both days on campus. Cohort B will have less clean sanitized classrooms, restrooms, surfaces, lunch tables. Therefore, why not implement an AA Monday, Tuesday, and BB Thursday, Friday, to allow less cross-contamination and more sanitary learning environments for our students? Who is cleaning classrooms between periods? Students, teacher, there are only five minutes between periods, five, seven, and six, eight, and other periods only have 15 minutes for cleaning break. How is that enough time to clean and allow everyone to exit and get to their class? How much class time instruction will be lost due to this? Movement within hallways, corridors will be restricted, thus making longer commute times between buildings, classrooms, or a larger campus. I understand desks will be designated for A and B students.
That is the end of the two minutes. Trustee Yelsey?
Thank you. Moving on to trustee Anderson.
Yes, my comment is from Gold Ducey. Dear board members, we have no choice but to send our kids to school. You are not providing an equal opportunity in curriculum for our children as an alternative at cloud campus. You are not only risking my life, you are risking my career by not providing high-risk citizens any other options. I have to do four total pickups and drop-offs in one day so my kids can get a minimal in-person education. But there is a choice, a choice that is well thought out, well thought out by universities, Irvine District, Tusson's District, and many other districts that allow kids to go to their schools if they want in-person or live streaming, live streaming or hybrid models of live stream and in-person, increasing their times for education and allowing the teachers to teach once instead of repeating themselves. Also, what is going to happen when a child gets exposed and is feeling fine? No choice of loss of class time for parents. More flexibility. You are, sorry, that's, it's not a complete sentence. You are endangering our lives and careers. Please consider live stream options, providing more flexibility to parents to sign up for cloud for just a trimester or a semester.
Thank you. Trustee Barto.
Apologize for my earlier technical difficulties. Here we go. Mine is from Deborah Wink. The teachers raise valid concerns. The lack of quality time spent in-person, omission of office hours, and lack of safety are extremely worrisome. Please provide us a better solution.
Thank you. Trustee Black?
Yes, my community member Julie Oblock. With the current reopening plan and hybrid model, a vast majority of our campuses are not prepared at all at this time. Many classrooms are ill-equipped to deal with numbers of students and the woefully inadequate ventilation that is necessary when working for extended periods of time around numerous students and possibly staff as well. The hybrid model reduces critical instructional minutes to a mere fraction of what is the normal amount pre-COVID. And there is absolutely no way a teacher can help during a student's asynchronous work time should they have a question or need guidance. This is the worst plan of many in our county and it is shameful that this district is pressing so hard for reopening that will more than likely be an utter disaster.
Thank you. Mine is from Tina Polykondropolis. Imagine the scenario. A student in cohort A has an upcoming math test. The teacher reviews for the test on Monday, the only day she sees that cohort. The student has an orthodontist appointment and isn't feeling well and came down with the flu, whatever. Therefore, the student is absent and misses the review. The test is the following Monday and the student is going to be completely unprepared. This is just one of the many problems of this model. As a teacher, if I'm instructing in-person all day, what education can I offer the kids at home? It's disappointing we are rushing all of this with no solid plan in place. We have to do better for our students. Thank you.
Okay, mine. Mine is from Kimberly Clayder. I am saddened and afraid. I fear mostly for students and families in our community. This plan not only fails to address safety manners, measures, I'm sorry, to keep employees and students safe from COVID, it removes bus service from Whittier, Ray, Pomona, and Pomona Elementary Schools. Children attending Whittier and Ray have to cross busy streets to go to school. This plan also fails to realize the negative impact of social distancing, especially at secondary schools where students will be moving in crowded hallways in buildings without windows and doors. There is no way to maintain cohorts or social distancing at schools where children mix regularly. This plan also deprives students of instructional time compared to the distance learning model. After six months of stay-at-home orders, it seems a shame to throw it all away by hastily returning to in-person instruction. Why not wait? Why take the chance of increasing community spread? Please consider and reject starting dates to returning in-person instruction. Thank you.
The next comment is from Charlotte Zerembah. In June, teachers were told that all staff and students would undergo temperature and wellness checks before entering school daily. The LCAP and school reopening plan now state that only staff members will be temperature-checked and that students will have a visual wellness check before entering school. Without the ability to measure temperature, how useful will this visual check be for the hundreds of students entering our schools while staff are lined up for their temperature check? Could the personnel doing the visual check of the students be able to do a random temperature check as time permits or do a temperature check on a student who might look ill?
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
My comment is from Kristen Howerton. Dear board, I wanted to address the learning continuity plan that is up for approval tonight. I understand that you have put a lot of work into this plan. I understand that you guys have to be exhausted and that you have put a ton of effort into figuring out how to reopen. However, hundreds of both parents and teachers have been begging you to reconsider. Over 1,000 Newport Mesa parents signed a petition asking to delay in-person learning. You now, you now have teachers from most high schools sending unified letters about their concerns over the hybrid model. I know you were hopeful that the cloud school would be the solution for concerned stakeholders, but it is apparent that concerned parents greatly outnumber what you expected and what the cloud school can accommodate for our community. Please reconsider following what Tusson and Irvine are doing so that more students can stay at their home school and learn from home. Or please consider extending distance learning as it provides more educational time with teachers. Right now, the hybrid model is lose-lose. It forces kids on campus from families who would rather have their kids home and it provides less instructional time for all students. Numerous parents filled out the student concern form and received denials for medical exemptions. The district was unclear that the survey was in actuality an application for medical exemption. And the district has failed to answer what criteria they are using for medical exemption. Instead, the district is forcing kids with asthma, diabetes, cancer-surviving parents, elderly family members, and other underlying health conditions to either leave their school, teachers, and chosen classes, or attend school in-person. There needs to be another option. Even in the learning continuity plan you are discussing tonight, the limitations of the cloud school are spelled out. It is described as the best option for students who thrive in an online learning environment and that families must make a commitment to having a learning coach at home. It also acknowledges the limited electives and college prep options. And yet, this is the only option this board has given to health-vulnerable families.
Trustee Anderson, that is the end of the two minutes?
Thank you. Trustee Barto.
Mine is from Laura Keen. As an NMUSD parent and high school teacher, I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Thought needs to be given to the safety of our classrooms as we move to teach in-person. My classroom and many on the CDM campus has no windows and the door opens into an interior hallway. My students, their extended family, my family and my health could be at risk due to the enclosed space of my classroom and lack of outside ventilation. I have heard that our ventilation system requires the doors of the classroom to be closed. At the high school level, different groups of students will share this enclosed space with poor ventilation throughout the day. Please consider alternatives such as outdoor classrooms. We have a unique opportunity in Southern California for this option. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Black?
Yes, this is from Alex Goodman. I cannot tell you how disgusted and disappointed I am to learn that the district has chosen to eliminate the Westside Costa Mesa Elementary Schools from the newly announced bus routes. I'm sure it's a logistical challenge to figure out how to provide transportation for all the students who need it, given the buses will need to carry significantly fewer kids to accommodate the current social distancing requirement. But it's your job to find a solution and require five and six-year-olds to walk by themselves up to 1.25 mile, a journey like to take them a half hour or more. It's not a solution. That's cruelty. If your reopening plan can't even fulfill such a basic function of our school system, you need to go back to the drawing board. To make matters worse, the district couldn't even send out a clear communication explaining what they're done, what they've done. The transportation website only makes a vague suggestion that families check the bus stop list to see if your area is still served. You're leaving it up to the Westside parents to scroll through the list and realize their school isn't there. If you're going to deprive young children of the transportation they count on to get to school safely, the least you could do is to tell them. This morning, our youngest students returned to the campus for the first time this school year, or at least some of them did. I have to imagine there were little kids on the west side standing at their usual bus stop, waiting with their backpacks and back-to-school outfit, already anxious about the strange new world they'd find when they got to class. But the bus didn't come because once again, our district has failed to prioritize the students and families who most need our support. Shame on all of you who let this happen.
Thank you. Mine is from Natalie Ramirez-Dobbins. Myself and many colleagues would love to return in-person, return to in-person learning, but the risk-to-benefit ratio is clearly lopsided for secondary schools. The proposed hybrid model provides minimal benefits to a few students' subgroups while considerably increasing the risk of COVID-19 to students, staff, and our community. Students are not in isolated cohorts or even in the A-B cohort model will still exchange classes, teachers, at least three, four times a day, and exposure to around 60 students in one day, not including their friends at lunch or their sports practices in the evening/weekends. The weak and extremely vague plan for contact tracing, poor ventilation, no open space for earthquake or fire drill evacuations, or a real disaster, disaster, disruption to learning continuity are all just a few of the many reasons why this plan does not make the safety or best interests of students into account. Students have shared that they have just, have just adjusted to the routine of distance learning and though, although it is not ideal, it is providing a better quality education and access to teachers three days a week and includes frequent time for office hours, for questions, tech support, and check-ins. In the hybrid model, students will be required to do the majority of learning on their own at home, 60%, while others seeing their teachers one day a week. This is obviously going to be add more stress to everyone. Our district has developed thoughtful, innovative solutions to challenges in the past, and I know NMUSD can do better if provided the gift of more time and teacher input for all sites. Please allow us time and input to craft an improved instructional model that would provide an academics and mental health support while maintaining the health and well-being of our district staff, students, families, and communities. I have given my, my time and energy largely after hours for over 10 years to my students and the district. Please don't make us give up, give away our health. Thank you.
Mine is from Tiffany Metcalf. We all matter. I've said it before and I will continue to say it. Students, families, teachers, and staff, we all matter. Right now, it feels as if many of us don't. Families were not surveyed about the reopening of schools. Yes, a thought exchange was done, but it is not the same as a true survey. Teachers and staff were never surveyed or invited to participate in a thought exchange about reopening the schools. We deserve to have a voice. Our employee associations who act as our voice have a seat at the table but are not listened to. We all matter. TK2 and SDC students, teachers, and support staff returned to campus today despite there being still many unanswered questions regarding protecting the health and safety of all. The plan to reopen is rushed and not complete. Information is still changing and being updated. Families and teachers have found out about early dismissals and non-school days at the last minute. This has caused confusion, stress, and more questions, including are we ready? Is the plan good enough? And will we be safe? We all matter. On top of all the health and safety concerns, there are workplace inequity issues. Elementary students have a 10-minute break scheduled during their cohort time for restroom use. Teachers do not. We have one opportunity to use the restroom, lunch. Classroom Chromebook carts were emptied for distribution in the spring. However, not all families requested a device. Not all students in grades four and below have a district-issued Chromebook. How can we use Chromebooks in our classroom if not all the students have them? How can we have a class meeting via Zoom on Wednesdays if half our class is at school without a device? We all matter. As an elementary student, as elementary students switch to the hybrid model, they lose small group time and office hours, which means that they will no longer be able to access their teacher to ask questions as they are completing their independent work. This is less instructional time. Secondary students currently receive live instruction five times every two weeks. Under the new model, this will be cut to two to three times every two weeks.
That is the end of the two minutes?
Thank you.
My comment is from Chris Broody. Our field is education. As those involved in education, we should be listening to those with the knowledge to educate us. In the case of COVID-19, we should be listening to the scientists and epidemiologists who warn us that cases are rising and will continue to rise in the fall, that a crowded classroom is a dangerous environment for spread, that rapid response testing and contact tracing are necessary to stop spread, and that extensive PPE is required to keep children and school faculty safe. Instead, we are ignoring science and sending our school faculty and children into the most dangerous pandemic in a century underprotected and uninformed. Instead of being allies in the fight to keep our school personnel safe, our board is fighting against safety measures and ignoring science. It's puzzling and alarming that they would do this potential harm to our community. And one can only hope that once we deal with sick families and school personnel, they will listen... they will listen to the science and at that point, instead of what agenda is guiding them now.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Anderson.
Yes, my comment is from Liz Slazak. Teachers not permitted inside the education center. Our most vulnerable students, special education, and TK2 students returned to classrooms today with a last-minute skeleton plan while tonight's board meeting is held on Zoom. The rest of elementary classes returning to campus on Thursday. This is wrong on so many levels. Why did you not ask your classifieds, classified and certified employees their thoughts? We could have helped out. We are in the trenches, we are in the trenches. Classified nor certified staff feel the schools are prepared or safe enough to return now. Then there's the equity issue that not all students have the necessary instructional materials such as a district-issued Chromebook. Why the rush to reopen in such a hasty way? Last-minute emails canceling school, ending school early, and safety plans changing hourly are overwhelming and have produced more anxiety in the community than needed. It also shakes our faith in the district as it shows that solid plans do not exist. It makes us question if schools are truly ready to open. The increasing number of 11-hour emails only promotes confusion and panic, which causes suspicion as to why the push if you're not ready. Again, we were never asked our opinion, our questions are not answered, and our concerns not heard. Now you expect us to lead children, children who trust us and whom we love into an environment that we feel is unsafe because you told us to without asking us for our opinion or having an adequate safety or instructional plan in place.
Thank you. Trustee Bartow.
Mine is from Megan. Please do not approve this plan. It isn't conducive to learning. Seeing your teacher once a week at the secondary level is not enough. It will be a shock to the kids who are already struggling, and even the kids who are doing well will slip. This plan is not student-centered, it's parent-centered. We need to put our students first, not parents.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Black?
Yes, this is from Cindy Mayer. Um, dear, um, board, my daughter Lana and I have been pleading for you to please address the flaws to the hybrid plan for a month now by giving recommendations for possible solutions that have been implemented at other schools which have been ignored. You are discriminating against high-performing high school students that are high-risk or have families that are high-risk by trying to push them into a cloud school that does not meet their educational pathways or sports at their comprehensive schools. Tustin Unified's solution is to provide a live-stream option into their classroom. Irvine Unified has blended options where students can enroll into their robust virtual school and also enroll into classes and sports at their comprehensive high school. These boards were thoughtful not to disregard high-performing high school students that are on their way to college. I hope you will rectify your poor planning and decisions by offering a plan that gives equal access to their educational pathway.
Thank you.
And that is the end of the thirty-minute time period.
Okay, perfect. Um, as stated before, uh, we have, um, we have all received them and we will take them into consideration. I do want to address the one about student, uh, about board meetings. We are addressing that. Uh, Mr. Lee Sung, as well as our tech support um, and individuals who run our, our Zoom meetings. Um, and remember that we have to not deal it with just a classroom or a school. We have to deal with twenty thousand and close to forty thousand individuals who'd like to participate. So we are working on that and hope to have our next regularly scheduled board meeting in person. But again, there's some additional logistics in terms of that, terms of tech, tech, uh, tech support and tech needs. And so we are looking at that and I want to address that. Um, as it relates also, uh, there's nothing more than, um, board members who want to participate and attend and go on to our campuses. But we are also very respectful in these next coming weeks that as our elementary schools get settled down, as well as our high schools getting in, involved, that we are respectful as if you've asked our community not to participate, not to, our parents can't go on to the campuses. And as much as we'd love to be there, we are being very respectful of, um, you as teachers and then administrators. Our administrators at the district office are there, um, and we are a phone call away. And once things all settle down, uh, we hope to, um, be able to participate in that. But again, we're being very respectful as well and not placing anybody at risk um, by being a member of the community and going out and visiting. So I hope you understand that. Uh, so moving on, Dr. Uh, Mr. Lee Sung, would you, uh, care to introduce item number six or address any questions or concerns that were mentioned in, uh, in the comments?
Or?
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Anderson?
I had my hand up and then it got removed. I don't know. Um, I, I just wanted to talk about both of those. Thank you for bringing those both up. Um, I personally was very concerned about that. I feel like I would have preferred to have this meeting in person if we're asking that of our school families and teachers today. Um, I appreciate that our next meeting will be in person. So thank you for making that happen. I think that's very important. Um, and I just want to say, I have had a lot of, um, requests to be on campus. And if people want me to be on campus as a trustee, not as a random community visitor, I think that that is important to do so. So I disagree slightly, um, and I think that is our prerogative. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, Mr. Lee Sung.
All right. Thank you, President Flor. Evening, everybody. Thank you for your time at this special board meeting. Uh, we do have a very important item, uh, to consider. Uh, Mr. Drake, our Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, and Vanessa Gailey will do uh, the portion of, uh, this item and we'll call for a vote. Uh, I would like to have an opportunity maybe at the end to, uh, address some of the comments uh, that we've heard this evening. Uh, but I do want to make sure we keep the focus on the learning continuity plan and take care of business which, uh, needs to be considered and approved before the end of, uh, this month. So, Mr. Drake.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lee Sung, uh, President Flor, members of the board, and the public. Um, Senate Bill Ninety-eight, um, established that the Local Control and Accountability Plan and Annual Update is not required this year, um, as a result of, of the COVID-19 epidemic. Um, replacing that is the local, uh, um, the continuity plan that, um, Ms. Gailey has put together for us with, uh, in collaboration with all stakeholders. Uh, and at the September fifteenth board meeting, um, we held a public hearing for public input so that we could take that information from the public, uh, and make any revisions to the plan uh, that's before you tonight for approval. Um, what I'm going to ask Ms. Gailey to do is to go through any revisions we've made um, and, um, share those with you based off of the, the feedback we got from the hearing. Ms. Gailey?
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. Um, uh, President Flor and members of the board and public, and of course, uh, Mr. Lee Sung and members of our, our cabinet. Um, I am pleased to come before you to, uh, request adoption of the plan this evening. We've had a couple of slight changes in the plan since it was originally posted. Um, as you may recall, there was a special board meeting on September tenth, the very same day that the draft was posted. So we had posted our reality at that time, and a couple of things have evolved, like our reopening date and some details around that. And so this current version of the plan recognizes, um, the reality as of, even some changes that were announced as of Friday of last week. So we wanted to make sure that the plan was accurate as of, um, up to the minute. So, um, some things that changed were adding the detail that, um, students would be arriving at the primary level on September twenty-ninth, as well as October twelfth for secondary, and that would be something like on page four. So there was a ripple effect throughout the plan of certain details about reopening. We've made an adjustment to our face mask policy. So that is now acknowledged in this plan. Um, we have some updated protocols slightly around screening, and so, um, that would be on pages sixteen and seventeen. We had a classroom detail adjust around Plexiglas on page eighteen. So there are little adjustments that all come from the reopening plan, the district reopening plan that was revised as of the twenty-fifth. And so you can look to these two plans to fit together seamlessly as of today. And we will continue to update, um, as the plans evolve and make sure that the public knows. Uh, we are trying to really make those two plans fit together seamlessly. Um, there was another component around professional development on page thirty. Um, Orange County Department of Education reviews our plan and they provide recommendations different from the Local Control and Accountability Plan where they can disapprove our plan. Really, it's just recommendations. And I'm happy to say in their thorough review of our plan, they only had one recommendation, and that was to clarify around our professional development that we not only provide the, the methods and the, the theory and the guidance around synchronous and asynchronous learning, but that we also clarify that we provide technological support when we are supporting our platforms. So when our teachers are using Google Classroom and they are using Schoology and they are using Seesaw, they wanted us to clarify that we are providing technological support. So we added the words "providing technological support" in the second bullet on page thirty. So again, being responsive to that feedback from our friends at, um, the County Office of Education. We added another detail around the staff roles and responsibilities regarding reopening again on the twenty-ninth. And that was around on page thirty-one, so acknowledging that our teachers are supporting in that. And then we added some details around the grab-and-go lunches on, um, page forty-three with school nutrition, acknowledging that in the hybrid model, it's a little bit of a difference. Um, we're expecting our students not to eat on campus but to grab and then go home. So that is included as well. And then lastly, uh, we made an adjustment to the increased and improved, uh, essay at the very end. Again, as you recall, that is an essay that is kind of a carryover from our Local Control and Accountability Plan. It acknowledges how we spend our, um, Local Control Funding Formula and, um, the things that we do in service of all of our students, but in particular, our low-income, our English learner, and our foster youth. So there is a component in there around the support that our specialists provide. And we wanted to clarify that it is around particularly, they provide wonderful service, but the intention paid for by their LCFF is primarily when delivered in, um, in Level One. So beyond that, um, we really did not have substantive changes. It really truly wasn't acknowledging these adjustments as we, um, firmed up some details around our Level Two hybrid model.
Vanessa, um, thank you, Mrs. Gailey. Could you do, uh, me a favor? Um, we have a number of brand-new families that have joined the Newport Mesa Unified School District in terms of TK and, and kindergarten and some first and second graders. Could you do, um, as a, um, just an explanation of what the LCAP is?
This isn't the LCAP.
But the LC, the LCP, which is from the LCAP. So could you explain exactly, um, what populations this really addresses? Um, and exactly what the intent of this from the legislature. I think it's important that, um, our communities know that this is an offshoot of an LCAP. And the intent is that I think we're going to come back to an LCAP eventually, but right now because of COVID. But if you could explain what an LCAP is and the issues that needs to be addressed and the populations it serves, as well as what the LCP, what is this?
Sure.
Not a reopening plan, in other words.
Yes, yes. So our, our district, um, plan, this one is the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And the, the acronym that we're using is LCP. So, CP, the Learning Continuity Plan. And this one is around the, the, the situation that we have because of the pandemic. And the old plan that we had made under new, usual times is it had to be altered. That old plan is usually a three-year rolling plan, and it has a number of requirements. That plan is over three hundred pages long. This plan is about this year, and this plan is just under fifty pages long, I believe. So, uh, much shorter and really much more relevant to the time right now. But one of the requirements of the current plan is to keep an essay from our old plan. Now, the old plan is designed to do two things, to say what do we do for all of our students to ensure that they're having a robust educational experience, to support them socially and emotionally and around their health. That plan has eight goals. Now, in that plan, our job is to explain how do we provide a high-quality core instruction? And then how do we pay attention to all of our students and especially our needy students? So there are some things that we're going to do for all students, and there are some things we're going to do for our targeted populations, like our English learners, like our students in poverty, and like our foster and our homeless youth. Everyone needs a solid core. And in addition to that, some kids need just a little bit more. And in our district, we're community-funded. In other districts, they get extra money to support these higher-needs populations. In our district, we don't get extra money, but we reserve an amount of our money that is, um, that is a percentage that's required. And then we devote, uh, those resources to, um, supporting our needy students. Again, we don't take away from all students. We have a high-quality core, and then we layer on additional support. So that plan explains the actions, the services, and the, um, the fiscal support that we provide. And we have an essay at the end about our increased and improved services for our targeted populations. Now, the current plan, the Learning Continuity Plan, is really focused on how are we supporting our students, whether it is in distance learning, in hybrid learning, or as we transition back to face-to-face. It acknowledges support for mental health and student well-being. It acknowledges we need to follow how are students being engaged in our program. It says what adjustments have you made for, for nutrition because of this particular scenario. But at the very end, they still want us to attest that we are supporting our needy students with the funds, um, just as if it was normal time, and what are we doing now? And there have been some adjustments because the times are different and because the scenarios have, have changed from the end of the year to now. So essentially, most of the plan is brand-new, but the very end is an essay with an adjustment to acknowledge our current situation. And then in December, you will all have the great pleasure of being able to review a parent budget overview. It's a four-pager with tables and pie charts and that explain where the money goes.
Great. Um, thank you. And both of these plans are available on our website, correct?
Correct. The, uh, the Local Control and Accountability Plan, the old one, and in fact, all of them are posted on our website, and that has its own page. Now, this current plan lives in the quick links, the Learning Continuity Plan, because we didn't want to confuse people. It's not the other plan. It's not my big baby. It's my small baby. Stay in its place, and it will stay close to the district reopening plan again because we want people to see the connection. And we don't want them to get confused between this situation and the regular Local Control and Accountability.
Terrific. Thank you so much. I have two hands up. Uh, trustee Elsie?
Uh, yeah. Well, actually, I, I just want to say, Vanessa, thank you very much, not only for the adjustments that you made today, but for the several other meetings that we've been through the entire plan, and I think it's been presented really clearly. And so with these adjustments, I would like to make a motion that we approve the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan.
Um, we have a couple of more questions. So do I have a second and we can just keep, um, answering?
Okay.
Okay, so trustee Elsie second, uh, made the motion. Trustee Mottoye made the second. Okay, trustee, uh, Mottoye, you're, you're, you have your hand up?
Yes, so the, uh, when we go, we can go to the quick links. The quick, quick links show the LCP plan with the updates that you made today, correct, Mrs. Gailey?
In English and in Spanish.
Que bueno, muchas gracias.
Si, de nada.
Okay. Uh, any other, any other questions, um, concerns?
I should just quickly acknowledge the hard work of our interpreter here, Javier Zamorano. He's done an exceptional job, making a lot of changes to many documents very quickly. And I do really appreciate all that he had done to help us turn around these changes and have them right back on the website. He's done really an exceptional job.
Yes, this is, this is, uh, this is just a minor question, but I, I'm asking that of a lot of our groups. Um, you know, we always are going out for, um, community input. We, you know, it's required under the LCP as well as, as, uh, the LCAP in terms of community stakeholders, numbers of groups. Um, have you seen, did you see an increased level of participation amongst our community um, in, in, um, the, the, the LCP stakeholder groups?
I would not say an increase, no. I think that what we had noticed before, as we were ramping up to do our Local Control and Accountability Plan, we were, the increase there, and I think truly it has to do with face-to-face. I think that we were, um, doing a lot of outreach and we were doing a lot of activities in person where we were putting up posters and things like that. I think in the distance learning experience, and especially over the summer when we had to do a lot of stakeholder input, it was a real challenge because there were so many things being put before our communities. So we, um, at, at minimum, we tried to make sure we reached every single one of our stakeholder groups where, where there are representative sample of our voices. And that's why it was important to us to engage our DLAC, our Parent Advisory, our Community Advisory Committee, um, uh, just a number of groups. But at, at the end, I do think that there's, um, it's a very difficult thing to get a template on August first and have all of the pieces around being able to reopen and then also have this plan which feels a little bit more, um, formal from the template from this week.
Thank you so much for sharing. Okay, uh, trustee, um, Anderson, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, thank you for putting this together. I've read through it a couple of times now. Um,
Um, and like, like the other one, it has so much, um, good information, but I think this one I love. I use our time capsule. It's like a time capsule of what we have experienced the last several months. Um, and I thank you too for calling out some of the points like, you know, there's, there are specific things in there that mentioned some needs for tutoring. And then also the thing that you shared, um, I think it was in the D-LAC meeting about how each of the hotspots is ultimately about five hundred dollars. And the, the fact that we have been able to offer those to every single student that needs one is really incredible. And a lot of districts don't have that. And so the wife by piece for me has been something I've been concerned about for several years. And so while there were some hiccups and you know, that, that was to be expected with so many that went out. Um, I just, I'm really thankful that we were able to do such, um, fast work around the internet piece. So thank you for including that and also just being super clear and calling that out in so many places. I feel like the document is just really concise. And so if someone wants to know what we did, it's really, it's all there for anyone to see. So thank you. I know you worked really hard on it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Trustee Mottoye. Your hand is up.
Yeah, I already talked.
Okay, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you put it down.
Okay, trustee Barto?
Down now.
Yes, I think it's just important because we have a lot of people who had comments and, um, brought up their comments. And I'm so glad we were able to read their comments. But just to be clear that this plan is a snapshot of what we've done and what we've continued to do. And really doesn't have anything to do with whatever model we are opening our schools under, whether it's hybrid or anything like that. I mean, there's certain things that go into that, but this plan is really about improving or approving, uh, the technology supports we provided, the nutrition that we provided, things that, uh, you know, we always talk about the learning, but this is really the, the nuts and bolts, the academics. But really those, the support pieces that you would have had in a physical classroom. That we haven't had these past several months and how we have met those needs. It, and I just can't underscore enough, it has really very little to do with whether we're back in person or on campus or distance learning. An additional layer that I want to add is that there is a component where we're trying to make transparent the funding that has gone into some of these pieces. And so even though we don't necessarily, you know, dial it down to the cost center, we try and show the fiscal support that went into the technological aspects and to the personnel that was behind some of the cleaning and, and things like that. And those are required elements. And so again, that is something that is part of this plan that we think is very important.
Great. Thank you. So, um, there are no other questions? Is there any comments from, uh, closing comments from, uh, Mrs. Galey or, uh, superintendent, assistant superintendent Drake?
Sorry, go ahead, trustee, uh, Anderson, go ahead.
Sorry, I was looking through my notes. Um, I did have one more question because it is in here, um, about the incompletes. I just wanted to have a follow-up conversation, not as a part of this necessarily. But I've heard some concerns for parents that they didn't get notified about summer school. And so I just want to make sure that we are really covering all the students who may have possibly had incompletes. I know the final deadline is coming up, so that was something I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
We can follow up with that.
Trustee, uh, Mr., assistant superintendent Drake, any final comments?
The only final comment is just to reiterate what all of you've said, that, um, Ms. Galey does an incredible job, um, in, in gathering, you know, all of this input and putting it into a, a really, uh, usable, um, uh, way for not only the community, but really for us, you know, throughout the district. And the amount of time and effort she puts in, um, is exhausting to watch, um, and be kind of a small part of. But she just does, uh, an incredible job and I just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Uh, superintendent Lee Sung, final comments as the, as the, the big cheese on campus, so to speak? You're on mute.
I would, uh, still like to make some comments after the, the board, uh, takes a, a vote on this item. But, uh, I will chime in and just say to, that I, I, I so appreciate that in the midst of all of the things that we're doing to, uh, manage this pandemic crisis. That learning is still part of our focus. Doesn't matter whether it's distance or hybrid or in person, that that is still part of our focus. And Vanessa and this plan, Mr. Drake and all of our principals, you know what? We absolutely keep that at our forefront. And so I, I do appreciate the clarification of what this plan is and what it isn't.
Yes.
But it is amazing, uh, all the supports that this district provides to students. And again, it gets lost real easily and when we're dealing with the, the crisis here. Gets lost very easily, but this district continues to do that and has done that for many, many years. And, you know, anybody who comes from outside the district, that comes to this district, which was me, uh, almost, uh, what, five and a half years ago. Sees that very, very clearly. Uh, and I just want to make sure that we're, we never forget that. Uh, always room for improvement, always want to do better. But, uh, but we, we need to be very grateful for what we do provide here and acknowledge that. So. Thank you. After the vote, I'd like to make some comments on the, uh.
So, uh, so item six A has been moved as to approve the learning continuity and attendance pa- plan or the LCP. That was moved by trustee Yelsey and seconded by trustee Mottoye. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Flor.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Black.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Snow.
Yes.
Trustee Mottoye.
Yes.
Terrific. Uh, so moving on, I, um, turning back over to superintendent Lee Sung. And I hope that not only will you address some of the questions, but you will also tell us how TK through second grade went today.
I will, I will. So, so let me start there. So first of all, I, I do appreciate, uh, the board's support. I know that all of you, uh, would want to be there in person, right there on campuses with, with our kids and teachers and seeing the parents. And, and I know you will all have that opportunity, uh, to do that. Uh, and, but I, I know you were all there in spirit and supporting that. And as you know, I was getting you reports throughout the day and even sending some pictures. And you probably got pictures from other, uh, colleagues throughout the district. Uh, but it was a really a fabulous day today. And it's so important to remind ourselves of, uh, what this meant. Um, I will be sending out a message, um, to all parents, uh, this evening. It may be out now or it might be out soon, uh, as well as to staff. Uh, thanking them for a really, uh, incredible first day of school, opening up our elementaries and opening up our schools to our students who receive SDC services district wide. And, uh, you know, I'll share a quote, uh, that was shared with us, uh, from a kindergartner. Kindergartner who said when they arrived, when she arrived to school was, I've been waiting my whole life for this day. You know, and, and, and that just kind of puts things in perspective, that being in school in person is really special. Uh, Zoom, you know, is under the circumstances, we're going to do the best we can, but it's really being in person in the classroom. Uh, you know, with their, uh, uh, their, their peers and, and teachers and everything. And, and the schools that I visited did such a fabulous job in terms of welcoming the kids and making sure they can find their way. Uh, and just being really, really positive. And, uh, in my message, I, I really acknowledged the work of our, our staff. And this has been a long time of preparation, a lot of details. And, uh, you know, I, I can say at the district level, but you know what? When it gets down to the nitty gritty, it's at the site level. And when I went to go visit the sites, when I went to visit, they had everything prepared and figured out and systems created. And, uh, and everybody was, was chipping in and, and helping out. And it was really a beautiful sight to see. And they, they're, they're figuring out systems on how best to do it. And you know, people sometimes criticize, well, the district isn't, you know, doesn't have a plan here and a plan there and you, you're not telling us this. Well, you know what? We do so much. But then at a certain point, we need to stay out of it and let our sites and our people at the employees, uh, at the employee level at the sites really work on those details. And what I saw was just a great example of professionals working together to make that happen. And I know that when you have the opportunity and you're chomping at the bit to do that. See that firsthand and to hear from them and the pride that they have in creating those systems. So it really was a, a great day. And, and now I want to shift, want to shift to secondary. And a lot of the comments that we heard in the public comments, uh, were, were mostly about secondary. And, and I want to state, I, I acknowledge that there is this anxiety and this desire to want, uh, you know, answers to all the questions and everything. So part of this process is as we prepare to reopen our secondary schools on October twelfth. Uh, there will be staff meetings, there will be trainings, there will be information that will go out. All the prep work that we did for the elementary schools, we will be doing at our secondary schools. And as you heard me say, when we talked about the staggered concept, that we were going to really focus on our elementary. And I'm so proud of, of what happened today. We welcome our grades third through sixth graders on Thursday. And meanwhile, we are going to be supporting our secondary schools to have just as smooth of an opening as we saw today with elementary. So for, for those people who are feeling some, uh, some anxiety and wanting, uh, more information, uh, that will be coming. That absolutely will be coming. And the concerns about the hybrid model. And I just want to say a word on that is, you know, we have, uh, not made this decision. You know, without a lot of discussion. In fact, we have had so much discussion at the site level, at the district level, with the board. Uh, and, and there's so many factors that go into this. And we've said this over and over again, there is no perfect model. There is no perfect model. You do more of one thing, you sacrifice in other things. But the one thing that I heard very clearly from this board is the fact that it's important to get our kids back in school. Back in school in person and, and making the safest environment possible. And the full day that we're looking at, uh, for secondary, the full day, uh, provides that in-person instruction. And it also provides, uh, safety. There are safety features built into that by having one cohort of kids on campus at a time and fewer transitions in between. So there are safety priorities built into that structure. And so, uh, I, I just want to be, uh, remind all of us and anybody who's listening that we take these, uh, decisions very seriously with a lot of discussion and forethought. Unfortunately, there is no, uh, perfect, uh, uh, model out there. So we're going to support our secondary. We're going to be working very hard to continue to support elementary in, in their transition. But also be shifting, uh, to prepare for our secondary reopening.
Uh, I have trustee Anderson, your, your hand is up?
Oh, that's, that's from earlier. I'm good. Thank you.
So, um, superintendent Lee Sung, how would you address a parent who has, um, who has indicated or a student? Let's, let's do a student because, um, I know the board members are receiving phone calls from students now worried about, uh, worried about, um, the going back to school. How would you address, uh, you know, the timeline of where are we in COVID? Uh, we know that they've taken down the waiver site so that you can't even access, uh, the waiver. The waiver is no longer valid. So how would you address going back to school? Where are we? Where do, where does Newport Mesa stand in terms of COVID nineteen?
Well, uh, so first of all, our, our county numbers, um, are stabilizing and, and looking better. Uh, we did have a little bit of a spike after the, the Labor Day weekend that, that's showing up on this last report as of today. Uh, but overall, when you look at our local COVID nineteen numbers, which I have been looking every week, every week they come out, I take a look at them. We are consistently well below the county average. So that's very important for us to understand. But it, but I always couple it with this. It doesn't mean that we can't fall or we have to disregard, or that we can disregard the, uh, the guidelines. We always, always, always need to follow the guidelines. But you know, uh, comparatively speaking, you know, our community is below the county average and it has been so. And some areas, uh, you know, very, very low, below the county, county average. Okay. So, but the main thing that we need to do, and the thing I want to emphasize every day is the fact that we need to follow the guidelines, wearing the mask, keeping distance where we can. Uh, we have layers of protection built into our plan. And I, I get emails, you all get emails about, well, why aren't you doing this or how come not more of that? Well, everything that we have been doing adds to that safety, uh, protection and minimizing the risk. So I do want to assure our students that that's what we're doing. We've been doing it and we will have that all implemented, uh, when it's time to, uh, uh, report to school on the twelfth. So, uh, it's a combination of things. And our staff will be trained, uh, things will be put up over the next week and a half, two weeks, and we will be ready on the twelfth.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments before we close this meeting and adjourn this meeting? Okay, trustee, I knew, trustee Anderson, I knew that you would always come back with a.
I always have questions. It was from earlier. So my one question, because I think that is one of the concerns is we keep that a lot of the secondary staff is waiting for more information. And so when can we say Friday by noon? Like, do we have a date? Because I think that is part of what the frustration is, is not, is not knowing a hundred percent what the plans are for that level. Um, and then I also just wanted to share, um, after school got out today, I had several parents from Whittier contact me and they're very concerned, um, about the lack of busing. Some of them are afraid of losing their jobs. Um, I am very concerned that we are not providing busing for some of our schools. It continues. I mean, I've been bringing it up for four months, but, um, I think, as I have said in several of our meetings, one point two five miles is asinine for young students. So we're gonna have to figure out a solution. Some of the parents that I talked to are literally thinking of pulling their kids out of school entirely. That is not a good option. So rather than, I would again like to reiterate that it shouldn't be about distance. It should be about need. And a kindergarten, first grade, second grade student should be at a greater need than a junior high, high school student. So I would really like to reassess that whole scenario because it's, it's not working. Thank you.
So first of all, the first question about the staff meeting for secondary. Uh, the, uh, secondary schools, uh, generally have time to meet on Wednesday, uh, afternoons. So that's coming up tomorrow. And, uh, so I would imagine every site will have, uh, a staff meeting tomorrow as well as the following week. So, uh, that's their typical time, uh, to meet.
Have we been, have we provided the principals for the secondary schools the information they need? New information for their meeting tomorrow?
They're constantly getting updated information, even as recent as an hour before this meeting started.
Okay. So I, I just want to make sure they're getting new information because the last I heard, people had not gotten a lot. So thank you.
Con- constantly. Okay. And, and the, the, um, concern about the busing. Uh, so I, I understand that it, it has created a hardship, uh, on some families, uh, with the limitation of, of our bus transportation. I do want to go back and just kind of state that the reason why we had to limit our dress transportation is because of the social distancing required on the buses. And so our first priority, uh, as I, I've shared prior, is to transport our special needs students. Uh, the second is safe routes. So when our transportation director looked at, uh, the routes for our, uh, buses, one of the top priorities is can families, uh, walk to school from their home without crossing any major streets? And so safe routes was one of our major considerations. And the third one was distance. So we went as far as we could in terms of, of, uh, being able to transport as many kids as possible. And so what that did was it did put some schools within a walking zone. So even though there's some elementary schools, uh, that, uh, their, their residents live within this walking zone. That's why we ended up having to eliminate, uh, some of those bus routes. And so, uh, that's the criteria that we use to establish these routes.
I know what the criteria is. I'm saying the criteria is not working. So elementary students cannot have a harder time having a safe route to school than a secondary student. So I would respectfully ask that we reevaluate what we're currently doing because it's not serving our youngest. And most routes are not safe for young students to be walking alone. It's an assumption that parents can take their child and walk them to school. Several of the people that I've talked to said they are not based on what the cohorts are. they are not based on what the cohorts are doing. They're not able to, they're going to lose their job if they can only come and have to come and walk one child to school and pick them up again. I'm very concerned. I continue to be concerned and I think we need to reevaluate it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Anderson.
So we have several other comments, but Mr. Superintendent Lee Sung, will you have the ability? And I'm, I'm, where's Kurt, is Kurt sir on? Yes, Kurt sir is here, Dr. Sir. That principals, if they, if they find that there's a parent in need, they are certainly, they should be contacting their community facilitator if, as well as their principal, if they're, if they are having an issue with, with transportation. Are we sending that message out to our, to our families?
Yeah, President, as, as you know, our district has always tried to do our very best to support families in need. And I, I do believe that is a good step to have them speak to the principal to see what, what we can do to assist a particular student or family in need.
The principals are telling the families that their hands are held. They can't do anything. So that's not helpful in this sense.
And, and trustee Anderson, it's true, the principals do not have the authority to authorize an additional bus route. Okay, but we might be able to work on in supporting an individual family. Okay? Well, what I can do, keep in mind, this is day one. This is day one for transportation. We certainly can look at what the bus capacity is and see what we can do. Okay, so I, I will commit to that. To analyze that. Okay?
Thank you. Trustee Barto?
Yes.
And then trustee Black.
Um, a couple of things. I talked with some folks and I have some ideas as to maybe where these disconnects are coming in regards to the reduced bus passes. This is at the secondary level when we get there. Replying for a bus pass for a reduced cost bus pass. So I love to share this, but we don't need to go into that right now for that information. And just a couple bottlenecks in our system, which are making, making it hard for families who are in our vulnerable population to get their bus passes, easy fixes, I think. And then additionally, I know we have limits on the amount of buses that we have. And I know we recently signed a agreement for charter busing, and I'm sure that only gets us so far. But one thing I thought of was when my daughter was at Heights is a first grader, we would walk to the EMC. And that's about a mile. And the way we would do it is we kind of had leader captains. So we had me at the back, my other co-leader at the back, and we would lead 24 girls up the street. And it was a mile walk and it took us about 20-ish minutes. If we physically can't have buses, maybe we get creative and have walking captains that are assigned by the school. Maybe we have routes that are along with the safe routes, maybe we have our employees along those routes. Just because I think, you know, we are limited in physical distance, but being outside and having people walk kind of apart from each other. That's something that actually could happen because I think at the end of the day, even if we were suddenly to have more buses to get people to school in the mornings, the real problem for working parents is that middle of the day for elementary. And right now, I think it's going to be okay because I was talking to a couple of families and they said, oh, we're not worried just yet. We're worried on the 12th because my high school student walks the child to school while I go to work or my junior high student. So we might not fully see the impact of that until the secondary kids are back in school because that gap is kind of being filled by an older sibling. So maybe we can plan a couple of weeks ahead and say, all right, we've got walking captains going to and from schools, meeting at the bus stops and walking the kids to and from the bus stops because a mile is longer. But if we had it done in a group and we had sort of a walking crossing guard, you know, maybe that solves the problem because a 20-minute walk for a kindergartner is kind of long, but it's not incredibly unreasonable if there's adult supervision kind of along the way.
Great. Thank you. Great idea. Trustee Black.
Yeah, I just want to, if you would address about children being left on abandoned bus stops. Because I do know that that's not the case, but we, you know, I want to make sure that we are you know, confident that that's not happening.
Yeah, obviously that would not be good if that's happening. I, I think there's been enough communication out there. Our transportation departments work very hard to communicate to the families. And, you know, they only ride the bus if they have a bus pass. And so that's a pretty well-established process.
Okay. So we really don't know if people are not.
Have not, have not heard that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I don't believe there are any, let me go slide through this. There are any other questions? I think that's it. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Lots of seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Can I make one comment, Mrs. Flor?
Absolutely.
Happy birthday, Mrs. Black.
Yeah, after my third Zoom meeting today, I forgot it was my birthday. Karen had to remind me. Thank you, Karen.
All right. Okay, we will see you guys in a little bit. Thank you. Bye-bye.